Hello, everybody. And welcome to Education, Equity, Skills, Employment, and Scrum. Welcome to the meeting. The meeting is being webcast. We've had apologies from councillor Barbara Murray and councillor Mike Stolary. We've also had apologies from Mark Ray and Maria McGarry. Are there any other apologies?
I've got no.
Any apologies? Everyone?
So the finance as well?
No. Okay, thank you. Okay, so anybody here who hasn't been to one of these meetings before? No? Okay, all right. Well, I'm James Ordin, I'm the deputy chair of this committee with the chair not really able to make this one. And I'm going to be stepping in as the chair. Foster. Okay, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations? No? Okay. Appointment to co-opted members, okay. I've had a recommendation that we appoint Maria McGarry and Stuart Harrison as the Diocesan representatives for this meeting this full year. Are they happy with that?
Easy.
Three. Any objections? No? Okay, but except that it was a committee, so welcome to them. Item three, approve of the minutes of the previous meeting. Okay, so pages one to eleven of the agenda pack. Are there any items to raise in regard to the minutes? No? Okay, can we agree those as an accurate record?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've had no requests for speaking spots. So we can skip past that item. Item five, the work on action tracker. So we all had a chance to look at the action tracker. Does anyone have any comments? Okay, so are we all happy with the action tracker then? Yep? Okay, all right, thank you. So that takes us on to the screening work plan items. So looking at page thirteen sixty-six of the agenda pack. This is a single item agenda because it's been requested because there's an expectation that there'll be a detailed review through detail on this item. So I'm hoping that the relevant officers can give us a quick guide through on what's involved here, which would be happy to. Is that good?
Yes, definitely. So it's a little bit quirky, so it gives it a bounce and I'm happily having a ball more than that time of year. Yes, and it is, sorry councillor Bennett, since everybody's used to it now, well, we certainly still think it's that normally should be here to introduce the action. It is a, this is a joint strategy between councillor Bennett, who's a big member for employment and education skills, and councillor Small, who's a big member for becoming the growth and regeneration. So what we're going to go through, I'm advanced, it's getting slightly, so it goes from thirteen to sixty-six. We're going to go through all the slides in detail if you can see here, but what I wanted to do is be able to give you the time to discuss. So please don't leave your questions to the end, if there are any questions on the slide or I'm rattling through them, you want me to pause. You know, do just, if you're the chair, you know, do interrupt me and I'll take questions as we go if you prefer. Or you can have that wider discussion at the end, however it works. So the strategy, I came to you, I think, in February last year, or this year, sorry, to talk about the briefing, we were developing a briefing with yourselves and internally our stakeholders to get to grips with what this strategy needed to achieve. So hopefully some of this will be familiar to you. And it brings you up to date on the work that's been underway. Okay, is this not the slide to me? Oh, there we go, come back. So the strategy is the overarching background of an aim of ours is that we want to have a strategy that ensures the future of our city is more inclusive, more productive, is healthier, more sustainable, and that everybody in our city benefits from that growth. It is very much a city strategy and through the work, we're kind of re-establishing strong partnerships with our anchor institutions and our partners to take a real outcomes-based approach to how we can drive this and tackle poverty across the city and tackle inequality. So the strategy then aims that we have that kind of the right tools within it, you know, tools to work in partnership to tackle that climate emergency, support our society to get access to better jobs, raising the skill levels of our residents, and then by improving household income and that could link then to that huge impact that improved household income house on life outcomes for our residents. I don't like pointing at, sorry. So this is the slide we've seen last time, so that has to be secure that includes the growth. But also we want to be very much positioning Liverpool as a place to do business and invest. So the strategy's got quite a tricky role to play in both setting out how we're going to bring our residents, our businesses with us to tackle that economic exclusion, but also really showcase the strength of Liverpool, the opportunity it presents and create that really strong narrative for how we're going to drive future investment into the city to drive that growth. We've taken a data-led approach and we'll see that in the slides in a second. And we want very much to take that place-based approach that really understands Liverpool's challenges, opportunities. And really, the brief I had, the brief that we passed on is that this has got to be a city-wide strategy and it's not just about the city centre. It's a holistic strategy. Really importantly, that last bullet of notes about that building resilience, we'll get into that a bit more about how we need to tackle that this role and improve that long-term productivity.
Could I just ask, um, finding resilience or less?
In the business resilience. There is a slide on it. Can I? Can we, is that okay? Yeah, and it'll be, there's a pretty diagram. Sorry, I'm not seeing that slide because it's not moving for me. Just a very quick refresh on the commitments. So we have the original City Plan commitment about drive that strong inclusive economy, council plan, the forthcoming council plan and a strong fair economy for all. And then we are part of that City Plan, that the refresh that's underway at the moment with the local strategic partnership. So this will be one of the streets, this document, this is why documents alongside, it's like the housing strategy, the forthcoming, the transport strategy that's underway, and the ways to be self-employed strategy, which are kind of the foundational, kind of key drivers across to deliver a better city for twenty forty. No, sorry, next one please. Yeah? Okay. So there we are, we've been skipping, we've had lots of internal working groups across council. We've had some stakeholder workshops, I'll touch on later, and member engagement. Through that, we've developed the evidence base which we'll go through to some of today. We set out kind of the forecast for our future growth, what that looks like and where jobs would be forthcoming. We're now getting into the outcomes of what to achieve and moving into the phase where we're then looking at the implement and the action plan for it. We're, we'll be going out to consultation. So when we go to cabinet, we'll be asking for approval to go out for consultation. We can come back around then in terms of out to the public and back to ourselves. So on to the evidence base. We have got some brilliant statistics in terms of we've got an extremely young, vibrant and diverse population, just under half a million, kind of the British age there. And we're first to set of the ASR's population, which is very exciting. Bringing that diversity through, so we've really got some great opportunities there for moving forward about how we bring our residents with us. We are the engine of the East City Region, you know, excuse me, we are forty percent of the region's economy, but only one percent of the UK's economy. So some really great stats and some really great opportunities. Our land market has outpaced, of course, cities, that's us in the bluey-purple line, pale line at the top. And so as we know, all the core cities here represented here, these wiggles are on the way, but we have done three times the national job base since two thousand and seventeen. The significant work and the way that you'll be aware of that have come before here and the other committees now has been huge investments in the health and life sciences, infrastructure, innovation economy through the national innovation zones and the free ports. We are rebooting that focus on regeneration and are working on our strategic partnership around our arc of regeneration and tackling those tall store sites and our big opportunities. Huge amount of work being done around digital connectivity and digital infrastructure, as well as our transport connectivity. And lots more work underway in terms of these stations coming forwards. And we've been delivering multi-million pound programmes around tackling economic inactivity, but there is much more, much more to be done. Sorry, very irritating. Really ridiculous, sorry.
Just, um, where?
I don't, yeah, we don't. Can we do next slide because I can't wait for some, there we go. We've got huge, a huge global brand, we've got a huge soft power in that. You know, we've got great stats on there, fourth most visited city, international visitors, third most visited city in England for domestic visitors. And you're the UK's first best large city for a break. We've got some amazing, you know, good soft power there in our health land, which needs to be then transferred, you know, out to that visitor economy, not that we want to lose our visitor economy at all. That's one of our key foundation economies, but it's about how we drive that opportunity across other sectors. However, we are a city of contrast, as we know. Our high growth trajectory was stalled by the financial crisis. We are the purple, sorry, the light, the colours are brilliant on this screen, so we're kind of in that cluster just behind Newcastle. Manchester's top line's looming away over there. So there is work to be done, I can't see up, our nearest counterparts in and of. Let's go back to the business vulnerabilities here and the business resilience. So there's what's called a vulnerability index, which comes around the number of businesses and the scale and the size of those businesses and their individual turnovers and their locations in terms of premises ownership. So the business resilience piece is linked to this national standing, understanding of the business vulnerability index, which then maps all like in sectors about where we need to do work, you know, where we have strengths and where we need to be doing work on that. Another area of future work, area of work to focus on for us is investment in FDI, which is, sorry, foreign direct investment. Our level's much lower than our core cities. For example, in two thousand and nineteen, we had eight projects underway by projects that's generally around in-boarding new headquarters or new large businesses to Liverpool. Manchester had thirty-four that year. So our progress has remained fairly flat on that level since then. Alongside that, we have, while we have a high startup rate, obviously high startup rates in the city, we have a very poor survival rates within three years. The stats are not good for the entrepreneurs. So how we support those startups to survive and thrive and grow is absolutely crucial to the.
Do you have any reasons why you might be so?
Some of that is to do with the FDI, so that kind of investment, access, investment in growth. But we have got work planned for the chamber to start digging into that more. So we're just getting to the end of what's called the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, which is the current business support funding. And there'll be a new programme starting in April first. I'm really determined that we're going to be kind of really targeting that money into actually what's needed. We're just literally doing that piece at the moment about reaching out to try and get into those businesses to understand. Because at the moment, we've run, you know, a lot of business support, whether it's how to tender, you know, marketing strategies, all sorts of, you know, everything. So it's kind of whether what we're doing is right and it's just we've still got that survival rate and it's down to access to investment, or whether we need to be doing a much more targeted programme specifically. But I think I have exactly the same question.
So that would concern Manchester, that approach to.
Exactly, yeah. To be fair, the Manchester decided about twenty years ago, they put a team of twenty-five people into their economic development team and literally just resourced it and went off across the globe and sold Manchester as a headquarters and backed that up with a regeneration programme. And not many of the core cities did that, but they did that, had the investment. So the rest of us all got a bit of catch-up, but we need to be getting those big headquarters back to Liverpool. Because we've had a number of issues where, you know, businesses have moved to Manchester, Manchester's now their North West location and we've lost out. So we need to be repositioning ourselves as the place to have your headquarters. And that's around having the, that's the collective approach, about having the right, right day office space, you know, the right narrative, the right schools, the package has to be right there for those companies. Yeah, definitely one to focus on. What we also have for our residents is that the income gap is widening. So that I think of the take-home pay and that for our residents is growing. So there's a twenty percent increase, which is higher than the England average, and is continuing in the wrong trajectory. Thank you. One of the slides that was most interesting, I think, is the qualifications. So we, in some ways, we have some real successes, so our NVQs, level four and above. Then you can see we're above the North West average on the right-hand graph. And we are unfortunately matching the downgrade on the numbers going, unfortunately matching the no NVQ downgrade, which is fantastic there. But we have the average attainment on the top left, which shows a massive disparity then between the people attainment. So we are the bottom, the bottom line there at forty-one percent of the North West average, we're forty-four. So there's lots of fluctuations, obviously, and you can track that back through various Covid and all sorts of, you know, kind of economic fluctuations, but that kind of average containment is the top left, obviously, the areas we need to be working on. Sorry, Scott. Employment as well, so our employment rate is fluctuating greatly, peaking back in twenty ten, dropping very low to two point seven in twenty twenty-two, and back up to eight point six in twenty twenty-three. So it really is a rocky picture. And the point to take from that is that going back to that kind of business, is the business resilience piece. It's our sensitivity to get economic shocks, where people have been laid off quite quickly and then companies start to go quite quickly and then not being resilient and not being able to withstand those shocks. Again, against our core cities, we have a higher unemployment rate and a larger population effort has never worked. So we have thirty-three point eight percent of our population, of our unemployed, sorry, population has never worked, which is significantly higher than the twenty-seven point six percent of the North West. And that really shows the key issue there. Again, the graph on the, sorry, the map on the right-hand side there is where that maps out across the city. Oh, I've gone completely wrong again. Where that maps out across the city, which is the more, you know, unfortunately says saying wards that we're facing that multiple layers of inequality. Thank you, Scott. Just a little bit of a deep dive on that economic inequality, which is that really high stat there. So we are the, on the top left is that economic inactivity figure. And we are the darker top line of Liverpool. So quite significant, obviously, spike with the Covid back up and down again. But breaking down where then that economic activity, economic inactivity, sorry, comes down to. We have significant numbers higher than the North West in that kind of looking after the, looking after family at home and kind of undisclosed other, of home, sorry, I'm going to point my round. And the long-term sick as well. So it's, there's some significant numbers to be looking at. Workers, workers' households, again, we are, it's not helpful, so the colours of the graph change at time. We are that dark, dark blue that's at the top and then we're now below Newcastle at nineteen point three percent there. And again, that then breaks down by, on the right-hand side, we've then got our breakdown with the occupations, about the skills and the declared occupations within the census. So it's quite interesting, the different positions. As always, income is connected directly to health and child poverty, which is a, obviously we have a huge and very well-written State of the Report, which was released earlier in the year, which can set up very clearly that link between household income and health inequality. But some really sobering stats here and the projections to twenty forty, which is, which is incredible, and the impact then on women, on children, is sobering. The life course stats, again, you'll be familiar with this, it came to the health and power reports. So they basically have a red, green, amber look at the kind of the, all the different components of an individual. Sorry, it's slightly blurry on this larger screen. The wider determines, we've got red for average income, red for unemployment, red for entitlement, red for healthy neighbourhoods, red for housing, you know, red for violent crime on the left, but those, the main ones are health there. So it's the overall picture. You can see we've got, you know, primarily red dashboard, some improving, some no change. But work to be done while moving all these indicators forward. Again, another map, but mapping out across the same neighbourhoods. And just to note again, you know, we've got sixty-three percent of our population living in the top twenty most deprived neighbourhoods in England. You know, ten point five percent of the one percent most deprived. So we have a huge, huge challenges to overcome and bring with us on that, on that journey. So, as I said, if we could, I don't want to be too depressing, the, you know, these stats, unfortunately not new or unfamiliar, but they are, they are quite overwhelming when sitting together. And I'm going to talk about the kind of the plan for how we, how we will fit with those. So far as we're taking a second, making analysis of the city. And we're also undertaking a future look at our core cities, core strengths. We can say that we can get into that in a minute, kind of where that, where the potential is and where that opportunity is for growth and diversification. There's going to be then the strategy call, will be a very traditional strategy. And I have that narrative for the kind of our economic future to twenty forty. And then there's going to be then an implementational delivery plan attached to it, which we can be held accountable to. And our partners, that'll be a city-level plan, so our partners will be interested in that as well. And just to note again, that link to the City Plan, that we're also undertaking citywide engagement with our, with key stakeholders and partners across the city. And again, that word includes it came out really strongly, employment, skills, growth, opportunity. It was such a strong narrative coming out of those workshops and those engagement sessions. To notice, well, we already have work underway to the regeneration prospectus that was launched over the summer. Sets out that massive ambition we have and the kind of the drive and the work underway about how we're going to unlock, unlock some of these store development sites and really focus on holistic regeneration, creating really, you know, healthy and sustainable neighbourhoods. You know, connecting areas of our city that have been left behind, improving productivity in terms of our business base and kind of bringing that together. So this is very much a key part and a key narrative that will be drawn into the strategy and about that regeneration ambition. So we've undertaken a number of stakeholder workshops. We've had twenty-six different organisations and ninety-three participants and plus a load of cross-council officers, which has been brilliant, just bringing together everyone's views. We focus very much around actually what we meant, what we wanted to achieve through an inclusive economy and putting together all the different pieces needed to actually achieve that around our people and our places. And how, there was a lot of discussion around the interconnectedness of all the, of all the areas and how it's impossible to achieve the outcomes we needed without driving forward across all of these different agendas. We talked a lot about the barriers to increase the growth of what our residents were facing in terms of our neighbourhoods, housing, you know, poor quality housing, transport that potentially doesn't link up the key residents' areas with key areas of work. Access to networks came back really strongly, we had a lot of, a lot of focus around young people born into workforce households or where parents were potentially working, you know, two jobs and weren't in the house. It's much about how they build those networks, how young people got introduced to, introduced to the world of work and got connected into that, and how they, you know, were supported to write an application, how they were supported to apply, it needs to look for a job. But what came out really clearly was the need to support our young people further than just getting a job, getting work into a career. So that was a really key theme and one we're really going to focus on, about that. And working with young people in a more rounded, long-term way that actually helps them figure out what they want to be doing and what their, where their skills are and where their careers, and then supporting them throughout school and then college or university further education, if appropriate, into whatever career that they choose. And it's about that choice and us having those aspirations, and that came out really strongly. It was, lots of our stakeholders were pushing us really, that should the strategy just be about young people? And we kind of pushed back quite heavily, so then we've got, you know, huge, huge other cohorts that we need to be bringing with us on this journey. But I think young people are the importance of how we raise those aspirations and bring them with us. It's going to be a strong, strong work plan. I'll just note very quickly on the Strategic Place Index, because it's something they're going to be using to monitor the strategy, how useful, not how useful, how impactful and how successful it is. So the Strategic Place Index will be a series, or is a series of indicators, which are relevant to us. They've been discussed on a lot and moved around a lot internally. And will provide us with a package of indicators that are measured regularly at national levels. So we'll be able to then monitor the progress of the city. So it gives us a baseline now. We'll be able to compare ourselves against other core cities and we'll also then be able to measure the progress. So it's far too timely here, but you have it in your pack anyway. So I don't think this is the final, final copy potentially, but it just to give you a sense that it brings together that, those, the people and the place in there and about what we think is going to measure.
Do you foresee the new model, model that improving these life costs statistics going forward?
I think, yeah, I mean, I think they've got a big task, haven't they, for the managers? I think how we move forward with that model is really key. We're working so hard, I look after the employment skills, the team, and we're already aligning our services now with those neighbourhood models better. So this can be that direct referent, and I know a lot of the council services are doing that. So I think that will really drive and make sure we've got that equality of access across all of the city where potentially it's been patchy before, because it's been a bit of a struggle to find the right place to deliver from, or it's been more of a struggle to get into a particular community and those kind of. sure we've got that equality of access across all of the city, where potentially it's been patchy before, because it's been a bit of a struggle to find the right place to deliver from, or it's been more of a struggle to get into a particular community. And then those kind of, that trust, the local managers kind of unlocking that trust a bit. So I think there's, there's lots of potential to build on that model moving forwards.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, I don't have a question. So, yes, and that's just the indicators. And then so we can then, as I said, we can then monitor, carry on monitoring those as we, as we move through. Scott, could you do the honors? So, yeah, again, so. Very quickly, I think I touched on this really. As I said, we're looking for a twenty-fourty strategy, twenty-fourty view. So the implementation plan will be a shorter, have a shorter lifespan in that, but we'll then have a city-level board that will work towards that refreshment and keep that, to keep that going. But the strategy will take that very much, that outcomes-based approach and tackling key themes which we'll touch on in a second. And yet just to note again about that, it's very much a city strategy. So it's not just about the council, it's not the council, we cannot do this alone. And also actually doing the mapping now for the implementation plan. There is so much amazing programmes out there, so many different organisations doing brilliant things on this agenda. It is about how we align our efforts and make sure there's equality of access and that spread across the city. So there's a piece of work that we do. So we have four core themes, I'm sorry, the two blocks on the bottom bracket, bottom of the top bracket, that's confusing, the longer one, I'm sorry. But so we have our, I'll explain it best, sorry, four core themes, four pillars that will come through this. Firstly, around stretching our key sectors, and that's to drive the jobs, to drive that growth, that innovation, that investment productivity. So we've really got to focus on knowing what our key sectors are, what our specialism is for Liverpool, really showcasing those, shouting about them, moving that, moving that investment forward, as well as then supporting our existing businesses to improve productivity, become fit for the future and thrive. Alongside that, we're also going to build that up-and-coming, that resilient business base, and really support our micros to grow. Most of our businesses in the city are SMEs, and most of them are on the small side of that SME scale. And that is where our jobs are, that is where the majority of our jobs are. So there's a lot of attention in, you know, across country and locally, around startups and micros and around attracting that big business. But actually, most of our jobs in the city come from our small business. So it's about how we get scripts, with what they need and how we can support them to take that step up and grow that job base. We need to ensure that that access to skills development, employment opportunities and that career building, I was just describing, is equal across the whole of the city. And really importantly, we need to place people at the heart of this. And it's about those supporting those aspirations, those opportunities and those networks. So there was lots of talk around how we can build better mentoring, how we can work with businesses to unlock different levels of opportunities and kind of support and kind of build networks for our young people particularly, that do not have those connections into the world of work. Also noting on that bottom bracket then, that there's kind of four more areas which we have to address and have to move forward on time, as if we're going to deliver that, which is that accessibility, that equality of access across the whole, the whole of the city. That social community infrastructure, that goes back to the labour model and others here, that we've got to continue building that across, across the whole city and support our communities to work together and work with us. Connectivity and transport, as I've said, things like the bus franchise coming back into the CA is brilliant. We can start looking at the moment, the buses primarily seem to run in and out of the city. So for many people, it's two buses to get anywhere, whereas we can now look at more radial bus routes and more interesting connectivity through the, through the mass new programming. Then, you know, small things like that can be brilliant, as well as unlocking things like the vaulted station, the new lines, Manchester in terms of central, Liverpool Central and others. Housing regeneration, physical infrastructure is definitely last but not least, you know, access to quality housing. You know, we hear it time and time again, around family housing and the lack of diversity of good quality family housing in the right areas near a good school. And we need to tackle that to make sure we've got the full range of tenures across the whole of the city, to make sure that people want to stay and they're not moving to a work area time and time again. So that whole housing and regeneration piece is really, really crucial, and the physical infrastructure that comes with that. The strategy is very much under the aim by our net zero, our commitment to net zero for council operations by twenty thirty and for the city for twenty forty, and our wider sustainability goals with that. Equality obviously absolutely essential to that. And also then that celebration of our, of the city, that such strategy has got, is tackling some really weighty, difficult issues, but it's also got to provide a platform to drive inward investment and foreign direct investment. So that's what the strategy can add to it. So lots of work to be done, basically, lots and lots of work to be done. And this is just some of then the work streams that we're starting to pull out and map the activity against and understand who is doing what now in the city, what programmes are grant funding specific, so are then limited by job release. So it might be we've got brilliant programmes happening in Speke, but we want them in Kensington, it might be Timescales, it might be funding funded by Timescales, et cetera, et cetera. So we just need to take the best practice that's happening and ensure that equality of access through. Is there any questions before I just go on to that future?
I've got a question, but maybe, I was going to say it again, but maybe it's now an opportune moment to ask. I was just, I think it's obviously a lot of thinking back to the strategy, and I'm just puzzled as we're looking through the detail of it, how we're going to measure some of these, especially if we look around, we're at thirty-three percent of, you know, the working age population of people of level work, it's, you know, it's a stark figure. We had a party conference here last week, as I'm sure most of you in the room know, we talked about the youth guarantee, the national service to get people back into work, and we talked about in that, the detail of it, about getting two million people across the country back into employment. So whether there's going to be detail in the strategy around what that means for, we talked about thirty percent not actually being in employment, but what's that look like by twenty forty? Is that, you know, twenty percent to ten percent or zero? Just, I wonder if there's going to be more detail to it.
Yeah, hundred percent. Those outcomes are being finalized, but yes, they will be, they will be in there to go, this is what we are aiming towards, it won't just be generic. We want to reduce unemployment. So we're just trying to map that out at the moment as well. We want to be ambitious, but obviously there's a realist as well in terms of the kind of budget situations, et cetera. So, yeah.
I think that comes back to improving the foreign investments as well. We can't achieve higher rates if we don't have that investment community in the city. So I think that's one of the core things that we should do in another city, to not only keep in Manchester, but to better our chances and our children's chances as well.
Yeah, I think this is actually that, you know, that northern, it's not about competing in Manchester, it's about articulation of the whole. I mean, there's no other place in the UK where you've got three quarters of these lined up, like Liverpool, Manchester Leeds. And if you're in the USA, if you're from the US, that's suburbs, that's not, that's not three separate cities, and how we articulate that. And other places, like you have the golden triangle, Oxford, Cambridge, London, you know, our health and life sciences, and they position themselves, they don't go all the way to Cambridge, they position themselves to health and life sciences supercluster. And there is something about, we need to be better in the north about doing that and kind of recognise it. And I think there's to be, you know, great relationship developing between Steve and Andy Rosser, and so kind of those discussions will continue and hopefully deepen this and provide, you know, that stronger political narrative and we can match up with that sort of thing to me.
Is this a lot?
There is, sorry. Really, I can have no voice with this. This is just, this last section is just where we think the growth and the jobs are going to come from. So the, kind of our, our key sectors are, they're not a surprise to anybody, but it's for us, it's then about understanding the specialisms we have within them. So within the creative digital, you know, we have unique specialisms around, particularly around music and gaming and, you know, all sorts of interesting things that other cities don't have. So the strategy will then start articulating what those specialisms are. So it kind of differentiates us from, from the rest of the region and from, as from Manchester, but articulating it as a whole then allows us to align and create those clusters. So it's a delicate line, aligning, articulating our specialisms as well as then aligning, because that's the power of the region or the power of the north. So, yes, we're very much looking at how we move away from what we have at the moment from that previous slide, that kind of quite vulnerable, narrow foundation economy that we've got. Most of our jobs are focused around the industry economy and are very much linked to the public sector. So I think thirty-five percent of our jobs in the city are kind of linked to the public sector, which is, you know, is okay, but that's not a sustainable position. And we need to balance that. So it's about bringing forward then and working with our specialist sectors to increase that job base. So this is our forecast in GBA, I'm sorry, I've got lots of multitude full timed lines again. But it just shows you on the top, I can't even see it, that's dreadful, it's coming from the screen, I'm so sorry. Maybe it's in the packs. We're looking at a smudge of purple, which is helpful, but it just shows you where our jobs are going to be. It's advanced manufacturing for us, sorry, not jobs, one GBA, advanced manufacturing, GBA, so that's kind of the gross value added and turnover is, is going to, is projecting to include very important, certainly health and life sciences for us. Life sciences is a slight sector, I don't know what to go into now, but life science separately, again, huge jobs there, digital gaming. So we can see where our jobs can come from, maritime logistics, that's just the editor space, that's where he's going to be faced across the city and then across the UK. And then at the bottom, we've got the growth values in terms of what we see, that's going to be increasing. So this is from the Oxford economics baseline, from the CA, and then the manager extracted the data from that. So it's the growth, that bottom chart is easier to understand in terms of then how we see that GBA and financial services, professional services, education, health and life sciences really increasing. The productivity again, advanced manufacturing streaming away there at the top, maritime logistics really, really increasing. So again, we've got some really clear stats and clarity about where that GBA is going to be increasing and where, and through that, then the productivity per full-time equivalent person is going to be increasing, which is no surprise, but it's good to have that be confirmed. And also things like digital creative, which many people don't think of in terms of, in that way, is massively increasing for us as well. However, with that then, kind of the job impacts, so that all that improved productivity and advanced manufacturing then leads to deficits then in terms of the job, the numbers of jobs that delivers. So when we're focusing on how we move our sectors forward, there's one thing around retaining industries such as advanced manufacturing, they deliver a huge business rate, which allows us to reinvest in the city. So there are, you know, we want to increase, have that GBA, we want the university, but we're not going to be aligning those for the jobs. So it's just, all this work that's built helps us build a picture of how we're working with the sectors and why we're working with them and in what So that's productivity and growth. So this is kind of almost a swatch of the work we need to do to then improve our areas about increasing resilience, driving that productivity, et cetera, broken down by sectors just separately. Job density, and the projections on our job density is really, is really positive. We are again, that kind of thick, hopefully blue line at the top. And above then are our counterparts in the North West and the wider regional area. So that's then improving up to nearly one job per month, which is obviously the aim for every city to get, one job per month. So then our next steps are completing the narrative, testing out, we've been testing out, we're obviously going to be doing the scrutiny, the growth and economy scrutiny, sorry, protection economy scrutiny, and various stakeholder groups. We've got more stakeholder groups planned throughout October. And touching back in, undertaking the map and I was talking around and then building that implementation plan and starting to put that next in our governance structure. And we're actually going to come into seven, sorry, I'm not making it, so I'm just racking through at the moment. Anybody please, I think that's the last slide.
Well, thank you very much for that, Kate. I did have a quick specific question just on the forecast section, if that's all right. So I'm pleased to see the forecast around the GBA. I'm glad to see that we're predicting the gross value added increasing, mostly across the board. But I'm looking at the maritime logistics section, I noticed that the, there's, you know, we pointed out the forecast increase in productivity, and there seems to be a corresponding increase in the full-time equivalent. The GBA doesn't seem to go pretty much, it's just maybe it's a technical reason for that?
It's a bit of a funny one with the maritime logistics, because we don't have the port in Liverpool.
I was going to say, is it something to do with the port?
Yeah.
Or we're in South.
Yes, it is that. So most of our, we do have those specialisms, we still have a lot of specialisms linked to maritime. So we have a lot of the insurance companies, in particular kind of banks, but both of them, you know, kind of specialised in that area, kind of micro banks, and lots of professional businesses linked to that maritime, and then linked, and then the specialist statistics. So those companies are based here above and in the port. So we have almost an office-based, the white collar jobs, I suppose, compared to the, compared to the kind of more, you know, manual jobs within the port. So we then see that GBA will increase because the projected turnover is going to increase and productivity is increasing in those services. But it doesn't, it doesn't then attract you to jobs because the increased productivity, you're only going to freshen services with less people, more and less people.
I'm looking at the previous slide, we've got the specialism diagram. If you want more diverse values of the energy-intensive job space, I presume we've got a academy and a local ethnic and ancient institution to ensure that there are sort of the right courses that cater towards those specialisms. I guess that might be ongoing. Do you have like a special, a specific meeting with the ancient institutions?
Yeah, so Andrew Lewis, Chief Exec, chairs a quarterly meeting now with all our universities, with all our corporate directors, and that discusses everything from the impact of students on the university, plus the vanity, and issues like that. We then have another meeting with our colleges, which is chaired by my directorate. The Liverpool City College actually is taking a real lead on that, so they have what they call an industry-led curriculum. So they have businesses on their board, which are, you know, from the main employment sectors, and they don't despise their curriculum based on, on the skills that those businesses require. So they take that forward-looking approach already, which is great. And that we have a very regular dialogue, they're obviously in the state, all the colleges are in the stakeholders here, as well as the schools through Liverpool Association of Secondary Heads and then the S E M D Heads Association as well. So we've been involved all the way through, and that conversation needs to continue, exactly as you say, to make sure that we're ensuring that we're recruiting our young people and our adults with the right skills. I was actually talking with the non-employment yesterday, and in my previous role, we actually, to whom that we didn't, but we supported and worked with an academy that took over a kind of failing secondary, a sixth board college, and did it as a science school, and they had linked with NASA, and there was a whole kind of training programme, the NASA Development, all sorts of interesting things. There's brilliant ways of doing this at all levels, right down from primary and secondary and then right up through ethnic and ancient. And I think that, that implementation plan really needs to tease some of that out. And I think that, that implementation plan really needs to tease some of that out and make it really clear what's happening and then what needs to be done.
Right, now that you mention it, I think my colleague over there, councillor Morris, has been in attendance at some of those meetings with Andrew Lewis and the universities. So I might be, might have to cancel John and see if he's, it might have been interesting. That takes us to the end of the presentation. Any further overarching questions? Anything anyone wants to go and explore?
Just, I think it's difficult because there's nobody from education here today when there's no offices or they're being here. But there seems to be lots and lots of focus on adult learning service, apprenticeships needs. But I think we really struggle as a city because we, as an open authority, we don't have a lot of control over our schools because the faith schools and academies and I think the schools really need to be on board and we need to be doing more to challenge the schools so that we're not in the situation where pupils are struggling at 16, post-16, 19. I think we just need to, as a city, be challenging the schools more. I know it's difficult, but I think it's something that we really need to do because so many of the schools are underperforming and we are letting down lots of children in the city.
Did you see if anyone else has any other comments? Okay, councillor Goode.
Just, I'm not off the bat, really, I mean, I've been going on a lot of weekends with the schools where kids went out, see, I needed my feet, like the schools failing, not being excluded or expelled. And therefore, they're really intelligent kids and they specialise in a lot of really unique, you know, unique sectors and they could be our next, I don't know, our next presidents or our next creatives, but I feel as though they are getting nurtured enough and I feel the city needs to be more in respect of, of those kids as well.
Anything you wanted to say in response to it?
Yeah, so I think, I think there was actually a whole work stream around exclusions and looking at those, we've got particular areas where we've got very high levels of exclusions and it's a real area of concern, both for the Department for Education and ourselves obviously on that. So that, but on the S E T particularly, so we do run a supported internship programme, but it is, you know, it's limited as all of us, all these things are in terms of results, which actually, so we have D W P assigned up and a number of the, and my brain's failing, sorry, but a number of them are big employers. And we then do background support, so we get children with additional needs, it's normal, normally, you know, to those young people that potentially aren't performing as, as kind of academically, you know, school doesn't see them, it's the kind of basic community upbringing in, in particular, so D W P have found it an absolute, they're so complimentary of the process because they find that the kind of math-based work within their, within their workshops really suits that particular cohort, so their, I think their numbers and their participants, they're taking on massively increasing hardship. We're also targeting at, you know, co-opted members, kind of ask, we started to look at it last at the end of April, wasn't there, we started to, yeah. And it's been interestingly about young people with both physical and neurodiversities as well. So that part's happening now as well, but again, it's a part that, and we'll listen to the results, but hopefully that will give us evidence in space where we can go and say, actually, as you say, we've been failing a group of young people where they're basically told, you know, work's not for you, that's not going to happen, and this is then unlocking those opportunities. And it's also bringing the businesses with us and showing them, with actually better to be small adaptations and the right support, that, you know, there's a whole cohort here that can make a meaningful contribution to the workplace. So when we come back maybe with, with the neat work, maybe we'll bring a report back at some point on that because it's been a really interesting part.
Final question from Lily. The report says that it's data-driven. I was wondering what one of the most significant sources of that data in the creation of this report?
We've drawn, we have drawn wide in terms of data, so we've done obviously the kind of national data sets and O N S and, you know, government statistics. As I said, we use the Oxford Economics to the, the kind of the evidence base for the region and they are kind of a very well-respected, used consultancy that kind of do that forecasting in terms of what they do. I mean, there is an element of, I won't say for the simple case, but there is an element of, you know, is it forecast at the end of the day? So a COVID or, you know, an economic, you know, a huge economic shock like we had under trust, then, you know, these things will upset that, upset that forecast. But they are, you know, a team of economists and data analysts. We also then employ it in circles, so they have economists and data analysts then working through, shifting through all that data to bring it together. We use obviously our own internal data, obviously you have Johnny come regularly with the, the kind of all our CAC and the data that we monitor. As well as then kind of, I suppose, kind of knowledge from the services and that, that kind of wider intelligence-led piece as well in terms of knowing, you know, knowing our communities and that kind of knowing the needs of everything else. I'm sure there's, I can get through this if it's easy for you.
No, thank you. Any other final comments? In case, the recommendations are to consider and revise feedback, which I think we've done, and then review the progress, which I also think we've done. So are we happy to number this report?
Three.
Yeah. Okay, so moving on then. Seven, eight and nine, cabinet reports, calling reports and one of those scrutinated, which I haven't got any. So with that all being said, I think we've done. Okay, so thank you very much. I'll be leaving to close. Good night.